Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 14th regular school committee meeting at 5:30 PM. At this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining with employee groups and/or personnel matters. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to enter into an executive session that requires a roll call vote. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. DeMoss, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. The regular school committee meeting will reconvene at 6 PM. Thank you.
Could I get a glass of OJ or some type of juice?
Brenda, bring in the flag.
Are we good there, Jason?
Oh, yep. You're ready to go whenever you're all set.
Brother, do we have everyone?
Sorry, I was muted. I don't see Jamie. I heard him and now I don't see him. So let me just text.
Okay, Jason, I'm gonna get started. You good?
I'm all set. Yep.
He's back. He's back.
Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the October 14th regular school committee meeting at 6:02. The October 14th, 2020 school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. This is a virtual meeting via WebEx. Due to the recent open meeting law set forth by the governor during the current state of emergency, the meeting will be held as a virtual meeting. To participate, you can call 781-565-8134 in view live through televised cable channels Comcast Channel 22 or Verizon Channel 34 or at YouTube Tuxbury TV. As a preliminary preliminary matter, I am Keith Sullivan, chairman of the Tuxbury School Committee. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda this evening are present, can hear me, and consent to be recorded. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. John Stadman.
Aye.
Mr. Cutlets.
Aye.
Mrs. Demos.
Aye.
The chair confirms as well. Staff, please also respond in the affirmative. Superintendent Mr. Malone.
Aye.
Assistant Superintendent Brenda Regan.
Aye.
Our business manager, Dave Libby.
Aye.
Our anticipated guest speakers, Eileen Osborne from the high school.
Aye.
Ms. Karen Cronin, the principal.
Aye.
Thank you. And student representative, Mr. Jack Stadman.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Reagan, was there anyone I missed there?
Bailey Mahoney.
Okay, Ms. Bailey Mahoney.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you for joining us this evening. As I stated, this is an open meeting of the Tuxbury School Committee and it's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. As such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly addressable physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. To participate, please call into 781-565-8134. For this meeting, the Tuxbury Public School convening by WebEx is posted on the town's website, which identifies how the public may join view live through television channels Comcast 22, Verizon 34, or at www.youtube.com/tuxburytv. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and aired live and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that people may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you do broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this party are available by request. Please email Gail Johnson at GJohnson@tuxbury.k12.ma.us for a copy of the agenda packet or visit the Tuxbury Public Schools website. The public is encouraged to follow along the posted agenda unless otherwise noted. Please allow me to refresh some ground rules for clear and effective conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will go down the line of members inviting each member by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And if anyone has a comment or questions that can be submitted in the chat window, it will be recognized by myself when appropriate. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the chair and for items for citizens forum. Anyone that calls in is asked to give their name and address for the record. Citizens will then be allowed to speak on any current or past agenda item. And finally, every vote taken tonight will be conducted by a roll call vote. With that, I would like to turn the floor over to someone we haven't seen in a while, and I'd like to give my heartfelt welcome back. Mr. Jack Stadman for our student representative report.
Thanks for having me back. Just a few announcements for this meeting. DECA held its first meeting last week. At the meeting, they welcomed all new and returning members and discussed new protocols for upcoming meetings. The TMHS Drama Club welcomed their new director, Ms. Pellegrino. Their this year's virtual production will be Romeo and Juliet. Earlier this month was halfway to Earth Day. Students Ada Nicodemus, Juliana Ricky, and Travis Cohen were at TMHS picking up trash found around the field. They were featured in the town crier. The International Club also helped out on halfway to Earth Day by cleaning up some trash on Tuxbury's nature trails. Student Council had its first meeting today. They welcomed new freshmen to the group and will be having elections for leadership positions shortly. And the morning update has started up once again. You can turn in tune in every morning on YouTube except for Wednesday. That's all the announcements I have for this meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. I'm just gonna check on my colleagues. Great to see you again. If anyone has any comments or questions, I'll start with Mr. Cutlass.
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
All set, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Demos.
All set. Thank you.
And the other, Mr. Stadman.
I'll ask you to unblur your screen, Mr. Stadman.
I thought you were gonna assign them some chores there, John. You missed it.
Nah, he already did his chore list this week. He's all good.
Good job, Jack. Jack, it's great to have you back. How are you enjoying school?
Good so far. Everyone's starting to get their traction again, and it's good to be back in the schedule with my friends. So, yeah.
Great. Well, that's wonderful to hear, and thanks. We'll see you next month. I appreciate the update.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. I'm gonna go to Jason now to see if there's anyone on the line for citizens forum, seeing we have no presentations this evening.
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I see, Mr. Malone, it's kind of been a customary if we have people on that have business later on in the agenda. Would you like to take that business now?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I already asked the committee to entertain to take out of all business the Tuxbury Memorial High School international trip update. And to take that out of old business and here it now, we have Ms. Mahoney from Tuxbury Memorial High School and Dr. Osborne with us as well.
What's the pleasure of the board? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, to take out of order on the old business, the TMHS international trip. In request, Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote? Mrs. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. The floor is as well. Superintendent Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the pandemic has certainly had an effect on student travel, not only across the United States but across the world. And Tuxbury Memorial High School has a great tradition of some student trips abroad. And we want to make sure there's some thoughtful decisions going forward in regards to student international trip. And I think Dr. Osborne and Ms. Mahoney would like to make you aware of some of the thoughts and decisions they've had as far as these trips are concerned and ask you to entertain a vote to support their recommendations. With that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Osborne.
Thank you.
I think muted.
Yep.
I'm sorry. Okay, so we have this year three trips scheduled. Greece in February, Costa Rica in April, and the British Isles for the summer. So obviously, given the pandemic and the lack of ability to travel, Ms. Mahoney, I know, has been working hard to try to figure out what we can do with those kids that had scheduled and started to pay for those trips. So I know she had been meeting with EF, which is the travel agency that we that we go with. So we looked at each of the trips individually. We met with with Principal Bernard and came up with some some recommendations. I don't know. Bailey, do you want to to talk about sort of what we decided or what we discussed?
Sure. So we looked at all the students going and of the three trips, two of the trips were almost all seniors. The British Isles trip had three students enrolled and two of those three were seniors. And then the Greece trip, I believe, had nine and all but one of those were seniors as well. So with those two trips, it seems unreasonable to even to continue moving those. And rather just see if those two students would want to on the Costa Rica trip, which had more underclassmen than seniors, we would still have enough to run that trip. Whereas with Greece and Costa Rica, one student is not enough to run either of those. And then EF has put forward options for the seniors as well that I can discuss if we would like.
And the Costa Rica trip, which was scheduled to take place in April, had 13 students of those four were seniors. So the majority of those students were underclassmen. So what the thought was, given this year's uncertainty, is to push the trips forward to happen in 2022. So in the spring of 2022. And so that was sort of what our discussion had been. It's really sad because there were lots of seniors that were planning to go on these trips. And Ms. Mahoney can talk about the all of the work that she's been trying to do with EF to try to get them at least something, you know, so they wouldn't be missing out totally.
So after speaking with Josiah RAF rep, he gave me a couple of suggestions. One thing for the seniors was they could cancel and they would get their money back minus $100 because EF has already put down the deposits for these trips because they're happening. And it's just kind of how their policy has been working. They did release new guidelines that if a senior were to cancel before December 15th and find someone to replace them, they could get back as long as a new travel through, excuse me, as long as the new traveler is still enrolled in the 2022 trip, the canceled 2021 traveler will receive a full refund less than $165 insurance. So if a senior can find someone to take their place, they get more money back. The other option that he proposed was that the seniors could all take a voucher from EF for their entire amount that they've put in and use that towards a future trip with EF. EF has a great college travel program. That's how I got to go to Spain. The first time was through their college trip. Or the seniors could all, if the summer of 2021 is safe to travel, the seniors could do their own just senior trip. The vouchers are also transferable. So if the seniors have younger siblings that would want to go on a trip with the high school, they could transfer that. They are also transferable to the adults. So if a parent wants to take one of EF's go ahead tours, they can do that as well.
So I think where we're standing is probably the the Greece trip and the the British Isles trip would be canceled. And we would try to run the Costa Rica trip in the spring of 2022.
Okay, that sounds great, Mrs. Osborne. I'm just gonna open it up to my colleagues if they have any comments. I appreciate you guys coming in and presenting this to us, obviously, with the uncertainty in the in the pandemic. It's important. So I'm gonna start with Mrs. Demos. Do you have any questions or comments?
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Osborne and Ms. Mahoney for all the time and effort put forth towards this. I can definitely appreciate as my daughter was going to Greece with you all, how excited the students were for this opportunity. You know, siblings have done this in the past and have made great memories. And it's just one of those things, the pandemic, we can't control, right? So I do want to thank you for all of that. I know the kids are gonna be disappointed. My question is, will EF tours have any sort of a parent meeting with those of us that were enrolled? Or are we just going to have our questions directed through you, through email? Do we just do it individually? Or is it, you know, a group that we talk?
My hope was to, after this meeting, once we have a set plan, is to get in touch with Josiah RAF rep and set up a meeting with all the parents.
Okay. Because I think there'll be several questions, like we bought an extra level of insurance for any sort of cancellation. So would the $500 fee still apply to us where some other families may not have purchased that? You know, there may be individual questions, I think, that'll pop up that I think we, as a community, would appreciate just a couple of minutes of of their time. But I do agree that in the best interest of everybody, that this is something that's inevitable and, you know, I do support everything that I read in your proposal here in our packet. So again, thank you for everything, and I do appreciate your time and your effort.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Stadman?
No, I know, everything that all the work that you've done, especially during these these trying times, I know. You know, it's difficult having these having these trips canceled. You know, you look forward to having these times with your friends and exploring the world. And obviously, we know where the world's at right now. But again, appreciate your time and all the work that you've put in so far. No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stadman. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I'll just echo what Chairman and John said. Thank you for your efforts and putting all this together and just for keeping the kids in mind and trying to do good things for them. So a little under the weather, so I'm gonna be short spoken tonight. Everyone will enjoy that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And finally, Mr. Cutlass.
I'll just thank them all as well and echo what everyone else said, too. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the board at the time then?
I'll make a motion to reschedule the Costa Rica trip to the 2021-2022 school year and to cancel the Greece, the Greece and British Isles trips.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to vote to postpone, I'm sorry, to reschedule the 2021-2022 Costa Rica trip for that year and to cancel the Greece for February vacation 2021 this year and the British Isles summer 2021 this year. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Ladies, thank you very much for coming in. Hopefully, next year, we can get these trips abroad for us. next year, we can get these trips abroad for us students because they're certainly an excellent educational opportunity outside of, you know, the many other things we offer here in the district. So on behalf of the committee and the district, and certainly the parents and the children, we appreciate your efforts and we look forward to seeing you next year with hopefully some new trips for us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Just gonna check in with...
No calls, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving along. I'd like to turn the floor over to our clerk, Mrs. Demos, for approval of minutes and the submission of bills.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September 16th, 2020, regular meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 16th, 2020. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. It's an unanimous vote. Mrs. Demos?
Mr. Chair, I would like to move the school department payroll for the period ending September 17th, 2020, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,336,898.55.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending September 17th, 2020, in the amount of $1,336,898.55. Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I moved the school department payroll for the period ending October 1st, 2020, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,377,386.61.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending October 1st, 2020, in the amount of $1,377,386.61. Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote? Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. I'd like to now turn the floor over to Superintendent Malone for his superintendent report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly on the top of all of our minds is our response to the pandemic. Currently, right now, we're awaiting every Wednesday, there is an update to the metrics on the statewide public health dashboard. We're awaiting those numbers to come in for this Wednesday. As of last Wednesday, our number was at a positivity rate of 7.9 per 100,000. Once you reach eight per 100,000, that would put the community in what they refer to as the red zone. Our information from yesterday's task force meeting and our Board of Health was certainly far more promising than it was last week. So we hope to see that reflected in the statewide dashboard data as soon as it comes out. It may come out during this meeting. Myself and Assistant Superintendent Reagan are monitoring as it comes out. If it does, we will certainly let you know. We continue to monitor all students and staff with any recent cases. And again, hats off to all of our staff for their outstanding work in regards to social distancing, mask-wearing, hand washing, certainly monitoring their own symptoms. And thank you to all our students and parents who have been vigilant about all of their work around COVID prevention. It has certainly had a terrific impact on our ability to work even during scenarios where we have individuals in the community test positive. It still does allow us to operate school safely. So we're certainly very much appreciative of all those efforts. As a quick update to interscholastic athletics, the Merrimack Valley Conference has begun competitions. The superintendents in the Merrimack Valley Conference will have a discussion tomorrow as a result of the latest data that should come out tonight to make any further scheduling determinations for interscholastic athletics. We did have a successful week this past week. We hope that that will continue. But we want to make sure that all of our student athletes are certainly safe in any of their competitions, and we'll continue to monitor that activity very closely. Mr. Malone, could I just ask that you clarify, some people, I just want to make this clear to the public, that the season was not postponed or canceled, correct? Some... The actual season was delayed a week so that we could look at where communities are at. I'm not sure if this is going to be a longer term, week to week. Some of the communities in the Merrimack Valley certainly are having bigger struggles than others. Some communities may not be able to compete, which would require us to alter scheduling anyways. So right now, we have begun competitions. What we would hope to accomplish tomorrow is schedule out competitions a week out, in hopes that the other districts, including ourselves in the Merrimack Valley, are operating at a safe level and do not have COVID numbers that impact the schools. But those are something that we're gonna have to monitor very closely to make sure that we can continue in that competitive mode. Right now, there are no competitions scheduled out this coming week. That is what we'll be meeting on tomorrow. So we'll reflect on the data that comes out statewide later tonight. That will inform that conversation tomorrow. Great, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, that's all. Appreciate it. Once again, the task force had its weekly meeting this week Tuesday, certainly looking at those metrics, looking at a lot of information informed by our Town Board of Health, specific to any cases in the town of Tuxbury that may or may not affect the school district. We'll continue to look at those pieces and certainly exploring any opportunities. The task force is very interested in finding ways to increase opportunities for students to attend more in-person learning. So we continue to look at those pieces and see where we can make progress. Last Thursday, I toured the Alphabet's location at the Greater Lowell Assembly of God in Tuxbury, which is where they are running their after-school programming and their full-day programming for students who are on the remote portion of their hybrid model. They've been averaging somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 40 students a day. They have certainly put in significant safety protocols in place. We've been working with them to supply them with some individual student desks, which may allow them to actually separate students even further. They certainly understand our cohorting process. They're working very hard to make sure their students are kept at a safe distance from each other, so that students who may not be in the same cohort in school may wind up being in contact at Alphabet. We want to make sure that they are using the appropriate protocols and procedures. They've worked closely with our lead nurse, Kelly Constantino, in our Department of Public Health. So we've had some good results there. We'll continue to work with them and continue to assist them in any way that we can. A big thank you to our custodians and our maintenance staff, who've done an outstanding job regularly cleaning our buildings with a deep cleaning on the weekends and on Wednesdays, but also responding to any individual situations to include a specific deep clean of a classroom, a specific area, or a larger area, depending on the needs of the district. They've just done an outstanding job. We've also had delivered this week air purifiers, HEPA filters for each classroom in the district, and we've begun the installation of the MERV 13 filters for Tuxbury Memorial High School. A huge thank you to our lead nurse, Ms. Kelly Constantino, who has taken the lead in all of the contact tracing and any elements of positive cases within the district, and worked very closely with parents and staff members who may experience symptoms or have questions or concerns. They've done a great job contacting Kelly prior to coming into work so they can make a good decision about what the best thing to do is if they feel symptomatic or any other element. So Kelly Constantino has really been the anchor of the district in our battle with this pandemic, and certainly we thank her for all of her efforts. And just a reminder out there, in regards to the statewide travel ban, which people have to keep a close eye on because some of the states continue to change. But any staff members or students that travel outside of Massachusetts to the preponderance of states in this country that are not deemed safe by the state of Massachusetts, do need to either be tested for COVID or complete a quarantine period before returning to work. We've messaged that out, although the level of travel from student staff is far less than it typically is. It is still something people engage in, and we just want to make sure people are being smart about their practices. With that, Mr. Chairman, unless the committee has questions for me, I'll pass it on to Ms. Reagan. Great, thanks, Mr. Malone. I'm just gonna check in. I doubt, but we'll start with Mr. Cutlass.
All set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Demos?
Mr. Malone, I might have missed if you gave us a number of students that are attending that Alphabet program that we're offering, that we're working with?
It does fluctuate daily. Usually, they're going between 30 and 40. They do have people asking more. They just want to be very cautious about safety, spacing, and other elements before they increase the number of students they may serve.
And we are providing transportation from the schools to Alphabet to that...
Correct. From the K-5 schools, excuse me, K-4 schools in the Ryan, we have a direct bus to that location for the afternoon program before school services are provided at the Ryan and the K-4 schools at those school sites. After-school services, we provide transportation to the Assembly of God. And then also, they provide full-day care for those students who are in the remote portion of the hybrid learning. That transportation is all provided by parents.
And as far as their Wi-Fi capabilities and technology, have we supplied them with hotspots and the kids with Chromebooks and all of that? Is there...
They have, yeah. Their Wi-Fi access is suitable at the moment. We were down there checking it the other day. They also have iPads available for students. Some of our students have borrowed devices from us previously to do their schooling, and they can bring them to Alphabet as well. We currently don't have a number of Chromebooks to loan them specifically for their use right now. We do have some on order. If they do come in order, we'll certainly allow Alphabet to borrow from us at that time.
But it's not impeding the students' learning by...
No, no.
That was the point of my question.
They're engaging in their remote learning at Alphabet, yes.
Yep, that's all I wanted to make sure. There was no detriment on that end. And I'm glad to hear that you are in frequent communication with them because I know how diligent the school is with their cleaning processes and protocols and cohorting, that I just really think that that's really key, that we continue that when they leave us. So I think that is all I have for now. But thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Demos and Mr. Stadman.
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Reagan for her brief report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, last two weeks marks a first for Tuxbury Public Schools as we, all of our schools hosted virtual open houses. This was a blend of live and virtual time, some live time with the admin and some of the support staff, and some virtual presentations from our teachers. I can tell you, the feedback has been very positive. In fact, you know, parents really thanked us and said, this gave me the opportunity to go to all of the open house presentations that I needed to go to for all of my students because I was able to pick and choose when I did that. So I really want to just send a shout-out thank you to our principals, the entire staff. Our nurses participated in this, the support staff. They really, really pulled this off in a very professional and informative way for families. So we just invite families, if you missed the virtual open house, most of the presentations have been recorded. Some have even been posted to the school's website. So please reach out to your school principal or your teacher if you perhaps can look at the information now. All right. Well, this Friday, October 16th, actually marks the midterm of our first quarter. So it feels like we just started, but the term's almost halfway over. It's a shorter term because, as you know, we extended the start of the school year until September 16th. But what that means is, quarter-one progress reports are just around the corner. While it was a little bit of a shorter term, and certainly a little delay in getting started, nonetheless, we'll be reporting on students' progress, both in their ability to get started with the hybrid model or remote learning, and on academic progress. So parents should expect to see progress reports posted to the students' Aspen account on October 26th, Monday, October 26th. Any parents still having difficulty accessing their students' Aspen account should contact the school secretary. On that note, within our school reopening task force and with our task force parents' help and some of our school administrators, we are beginning the development of our first school year 2021 Parent Survey. We've promised parents that we would continue to dipstick in progress monitoring, how are we doing in this hybrid model and in remote learning? We need parent and student feedback. We've melded into this new routine for the past few weeks. I think, you know, as I walk around and see some of the classes, students are getting into the groove as are our teachers. So we'll be, parents can expect shortly after the term-one progress report to hear from us, so they can give us, if you will, our progress report, some feedback on how we're doing. Parents need to be reminded as well that all students who are attending Tuxbury Public Schools are required to receive the flu vaccination by December 31st, 2020. Any student who may enter or come back to our school district between January 1st and March 31st are not allowed to enter our schools without that flu shot vaccination as well. So we want to send that reminder out. School nurses will certainly be reaching out to students to get the verification of that flu vaccination. For our staff, the town will not be hosting their annual flu shot vaccination day at Town Hall. So Kelly Constantino, her ears are probably ringing again, was very proactive and said, how do we make sure, if our students are all coming in with the flu vaccination, how do we make this available for our staff? So we will be hosting a Tuxbury Public Schools staff-only flu shot vaccination day on November 6th at the high school. So staff have been informed of those timeframes. We're staggering it, keeping it safe, socially distancing everybody. And again, parents, just as a reminder, all students that are coming into our Tuxbury Public Schools live in person need to have that flu vaccination. Thank you. That concludes my updates.
Great, Mrs. Reagan. Checking with my colleagues. Mr. Cutlass, any questions?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stadman?
I just want to commend the principals as well. I know that we attended the very successful virtual open house. I thought that was a good, nice, refreshing way to keep things going. And that was a good way of doing things this year.
Great, thank you, Mr. Stadman and Mrs. Demos.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Great. I'd like to yield the floor to our business manager, Mr. David Libby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brief update for the Committee on Transportation.
The focus on the big yellow buses. We've seen a good amount of students being added to the routes over the past three weeks. I've been taking a snapshot in time of our student database. And about three weeks ago, we had 1,590 riders. We're now up to 1,632 riders. So over the course of three weeks, we've added 42 students to bus routes across the district. We haven't seen a case where we couldn't fit students on buses yet. We've been able to accommodate all the requests we've had so far. So if folks are wishing to switch their choice to a bus, we've been able to do that. Time-wise, everything's running well with fewer stops and fewer students on the buses. The timing hasn't been an issue this year with our big yellow bus transportation. We've also been working with the schools. The flip side of that is we have more parent drop-off in traffic at our schools this year than we've seen in the past. So we've been working with our schools, reconfiguring some of our drop-off and pickup procedures. Notably, at the Doing School, we worked with Tewksbury Police, Fire. A bus company had contacted our registry officials. We created a bus-only lane at the Doing School using Jersey barriers in front of the school. The thinking is with a separate lane, parents are allowed to pass the buses while they're loading and unloading in a safe manner. The registry was very particular on that, that there be no breaks in the barrier, physical breaks to allow anybody to walk through. So we had those installed last week. It seemed to have improved the traffic flow there. Parent drop-offs are now able to exit the property without having to wait for the bus lights to finish unloading. So that's what we did at the Doing. And we're working with the Ryan School again with Officer Rizer on our pickup and drop-off procedures there. We've been utilizing the security personnel from the high school. They've been hopping in the car and sliding down the street and helping us with pickup at the Ryan School to help that process flow a little easier and help us with traffic there so the staff can focus on, you know, students. Staff will focus on students and our security folks will focus on the traffic. So we're working on a better process and we'll continue to look at that throughout the school year. That's pretty much all we have on transportation at this point.
Great.
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Wilson?
I have nothing.
Mrs. Demos?
All set.
Mr. Stadman?
I'm all set, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Libby.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes?
My apologies for interrupting. Principal Cronin's been very patient waiting for the vote on the consent agenda, and she's live with us tonight because there's a donation made to the North Street School. Prior to our voting, I'm not, if it pleases the chair, maybe Ms. Cronin would like to publicly thank the donor.
Sure, we'd love to hear from the principal.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just want to express my appreciation to the school committee for entertaining this. It was actually by way of a teacher that works at North Street. It was a former parent of that teacher that their business was getting rid of an iPad charging cart, which is something that we often use and can always use an extra set as sometimes things, you know, get damaged or, you know, that's not, you know, the particular plug might not be working as well as it used to. So after I spoke with Mr. Jason Stamp just to make sure that it was the right configuration, it was sort of out of my league there with the technology. He confirmed that it would be something that we could certainly use and would be helpful. So I just wanted to thank everyone for considering it and certainly am looking forward to being able to reach back out to this particular parent who's been quite generous in thinking of us.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Cronin. I appreciate you joining us this evening as well. I hope all is well over at the North Street. I'm just gonna ask my colleagues quickly, is there any other questions or comments regarding tonight's consent agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Cutlass?
No, all set, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Stadman?
I have none, thank you.
Mrs. Demos?
No, the only comment I had was I wanted to take a minute to thank the donors for the library books and the charging carts.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Demos. All right, with that being said, what is the pleasure of the board this evening regarding the consent?
Make the motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a vote in a second to accept tonight's consent agenda as presented. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much and thank you for the courtesy of coming in, Mrs. Cronin, and thanking that donor. That's very nice for you to do, so we appreciate that.
Thank you so much for your consideration, and we truly appreciate it.
Thank you as well. All right, moving on to the committee reports. Some very exciting news continues to go on right here in the district with our new elementary school building going up. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Cutlass for the Elementary School Building Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yep, as you said, our general contractor, Consigli, is doing a great job. They're working every day, fully staff the job. The foundation's 90% in. The steel frame is going up very shortly. People will be able to see that, so that's good news. And we are on time and on budget so far, so that's good news as well. So that's the extent of my report, Mr. Chair.
Great, excellent. Very glad to hear on time and on budget. Certainly gonna make our constituents and the taxpayers very happy. So with that, Tewksbury Education Foundation, we have no new update regarding that. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Wilson regarding the Tewksbury CPAC.
Yeah, we have a meeting with them tomorrow, so more to come at our next meeting, but I have nothing to report at this time.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wilson. And Mr. Stadman, Wellness Advisory Committee?
I have nothing to report at this time, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Just as an update from my report and maybe in line with the Wellness Advisory Committee, the new data just came out from the state and Tewksbury has lowered its rate. It went from a 7.9 to a 5.3, although it's still in the yellow. It has gone lower, so that is certainly a very good sign for the community.
Great, thank you. That's a wonderful update.
Great news.
Malone, and once again, I'd like to reiterate what you said to staff and students and, you know, our vigilance to being committed to making sure we're following the proper protocols, just the things, masks, you know, as has been messaged out. We've obviously, you know, there's been cases that have came into the school, but they weren't spread within the school. So that's a wonderful thing. Hopefully, the numbers will continue to go down as we continue to learn how to mitigate this COVID-19 even more efficiently. So thank you for that update, Mr. Malone. Certainly well-welcome. The policy changes, proposals, and adoption. I know we have none, but I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Demos. I think she had something to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no policy changes and proposals, adoptions for this evening. However, I have received an email from a community member that was inquiring about our homeschooling policy. So we are going to take that up at our next subcommittee meeting, and then I will report back out to the committee of the whole once we've had our subcommittee meeting and I have information to share. So again, we're just gonna review our homeschooling policy next.
Great, thank you very much, Mrs. Demos. And I'm sure, I haven't served on the policy committee yet, but I'm sure Mrs. Reagan or Mr. Malone, if there's other relevant policies that we might want to have the subcommittee take a look at, we'll do that as well while we're using that time. And it's gonna take us to old business. The trip is already done, annual enrollment. I'd like to turn that over to Mr. Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you have our current enrollment. We have to report October 1 numbers. That's kind of our official number. We've been sliding down with our enrollment numbers continuously, you know, for the past six or seven years, which is average. We've been averaging anywhere between, I'd say, 80 to 100 less students annually over our total. Right now, and again, these aren't exact numbers because they're a pinpoint in date, we're actually showing down about 160 students from last year. That number directly correlates to our pre-K numbers. If you look on your enrollment, you'll see 111 pre-K students. Last year, we had 173. So most of that is attributed to parents not enrolling their children at that age because of the pandemic. Also, we don't have the full-day programming available at that age level. I will say, one of the interesting points of data is there is a large statewide concern around kindergarten enrollment and a reduction in kindergarten enrollment specific to the pandemic and specific to the fact that enrollment is declining across the state, regardless of the pandemic. Well, in Tewksbury, our kindergarten numbers actually went up. We're showing 261. We were 247 last year. So that's an interesting piece of data. And as you look along those grade-level classes and where those numbers are, you can see some fluctuation in some pieces. And we'll continue to look at that. Certainly, this pandemic has had an effect on our enrollment, whether it's, you know, a number of families who might have chosen to either homeschool or move to a private school. But certainly, overall, it's fairly consistent with what we've seen over the past few years and the number reduction in pre-K would certainly speak to the effect of the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Malone, Mr. Cutlass, any comments?
No, Mr. Chair, all set, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
All set, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Demos?
So, Mr. Malone, when you were talking about the preschool numbers, that was one of the things I had written down when I was reviewing my packet was the number of preschoolers. I'm noticing some pretty big disparities amongst the classroom sizes, ranging from like 16 to 4. Would this be because of a half-day program or an inclusion model? Could you give me some more information regarding the numbers?
At the pre-K level?
Yeah.
So that's also going to include your substantially separate classrooms as well?
So that is intertwined in here? I just don't know. The programs that are intertwined in those numbers, so I wanted to better understand it because it was.
And with our special education services, we certainly put that as a priority. So not only are they up and running, they, in many cases, for our high-needs students, are running four days a week, not two days a week.
Right, right, but they will have community members that are coming in as models as well still?
That has been reduced because of the, yes, that is reduced. There are models there, but it's not the number we would typically have, no.
Okay, I was just, yeah, I was trying to kind of wrap my brain around those numbers because I saw, that caught my attention. And then, you know, the pretty big number between the eighth grade and ninth grade, you know, obviously probably going to private schools there, you know, and trying to capture those numbers getting to Tewksbury High School versus out of district. You know, that's not a new problem from the pandemic. That's just something that, you know, historically, we want to look at. But as far as that other numbers go, I think I'm all set. I just wanted to kind of talk a little bit about the preschool to make it more clear to me. So thank you for clarifying.
Okay, great, thank you, Mrs. Demos and Mr. Stadman.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to our professional development, I assume Mrs. Reagan is gonna give that report this evening?
Correct, yes. Well, we just had our first early release day on October 7th, and then the second half of the day was for teacher workshop. You probably don't remember, but back in the summer of 19, we shared with you our 1920 school year goal, which was to use standard space digital assessment tools that helped us really analyze students holistically. That tool was called Otis. We were picking up with some pretty good momentum last year, and we had to start with our training. But this is where we picked up in October. Well, actually, for our 10-day training to come back to school in now October. I think it was serendipitous that we had piloted that tool last year because what we have found is it's a wonderful digital assessment, standard space tool that can be locked down so when students are assessed while at home, it's a safe, you know, assessment system. And teachers who are looking at student data remotely as a team can look at one dashboard. So what you see is basically the entire district participating in a training using Otis.
Great, any questions? I'll start with Mrs. Demos.
No, I'm good for now, thank you.
Great, Mr. Stadman?
I'm good as well, thank you.
Mr. Cutlass?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Wilson?
I'm all set.
Great, and moving along to new business, you have the floor, Mrs. Reagan, for summer reading, PSAT and SAT update.
Thank you, okay. Well, let me start with the summer reading as it comes first in the list. And what you have in front of you, obviously, is our 2021 summer reading or our summer 2020 stats. Let me just start by saying, you know, we're very proud of all of our kiddos for the level of enthusiasm that was put into summer reading. You can see, if you look at the sheet that has the yellow column, that's this school year. The column to the right is last school year. Clearly, our summer reading numbers have dropped off. While we're not thrilled with our student engagement at our younger levels, we're very, very surprised and happy to see the reading engagement amongst our high school students. So, you know, there was some rays of sunshine in the summer reading, I guess you would say. Typically, our teachers really kick off summer reading with an event and a rah-rah and encouraging. And I really do think the spring was very difficult for parents and students. And we just, you know, are thrilled that most of our students participated somewhat. So there's the data for both years in comparison. This was informational only. I don't know if you have any questions?
We can do all the update and then I'll ask anyone who has any about any of the three subjects. Thank you.
What I'll do is take the next two topics, PSATs and SATs, together. So just let me, traditionally, we host a fall practice SAT, the PSATs for our juniors and sophomores that wish to take it. You, the committee, fund that administration of the assessment. We're very thankful that you do that. And then in the spring, in March, we host a Saturday administration for juniors that would like to take the SAT. Well, as you know, last spring, SAT testing ceased. It was canceled. Into the summer, sites were canceled, and even currently into the fall, very difficult for students to find an SAT test administration anywhere. Most colleges and universities, in fact, even the Ivies, have gone SAT optional now. We have many seniors applying to school that have not ever taken a SAT. Likewise, scholarships that once used the SAT criteria have gone SAT-blind. However, we still continue to hear from some of our students and some of our parents who really wanted that opportunity for their senior student who hadn't had the option to take the SAT last year. So our very dedicated guidance department, Ms. Karen Baker O'Brien and our high school administration, really pushed the issue with college board. We knew we couldn't open up our schools to a Saturday administration. That just wouldn't be safe. But we did find out we could open up a senior-only SAT testing date to our current seniors if they chose. So. chose. So lots of moving pieces and details, but I'm proud to tell you that we do have, and I know Ms. Demos knows this, in October 27, Tuxbury High School senior-only SAT test administration at our school during one of our in-person days. So as I said, there's moving pieces. We have to be safe. We keep the cohorts separated because this is during an in-person remote A day, cohort B will be coming into the building. Those details are still in development. So, as I said, traditionally, the PSAT would have been in October. Well, due to our late start in school and our need to plan for that, we worked with College Board to push the PSAT. Again, that's the practice SAT. For any sophomores or juniors wishing to take that exam, off to January 26 of 2021. Crossing our fingers that all is safe and that we're able to do that at school. So our juniors and sophomores were given the option. We, they needed to commit and preregister by October 12. We have currently 116, 64 juniors and 52 sophomores that wish to take the PSATs in our building. Sophomores and juniors also know that they can take the practice SAT through College Board. Not, it's not official, but also through Khan Academy. So we're helping them out through that. Forgive me, I forgot to tell you, we have 85 seniors, 85 scheduled for our Tuesday, October 27 SAT administration. 27 who have chosen to take the SAT with SA and 58 who have chosen to take the SAT without SA. So I think it was worthwhile for us to really push, to take, to facilitate that test administration as 85 of our seniors are taking advantage of that. Let me just go back to the PSAT. Any juniors who have chosen to take the PSAT in person with us in January will still be eligible for full program administration and national, through the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. So as I said, many, many moving pieces for us to figure out for that PSAT administration. We got a lot of runway left. And then, per usual, we have, we're still on the books with College Board for a March 2021 SAT test administration so that our juniors who practice, whether they take the PSAT or practice test, have an opportunity to take the SAT in the spring prior to their senior year. So once again, I just have to give a shout out to our high school guidance, high school administration, and Ms. Karen Baker O'Brien for trying to coordinate all of this so that our students have these PSAT and SAT opportunities.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Mr. Cutlass, any questions? Mr. Cutlass?
Oh, yeah. No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing.
And Mrs. Demos?
I just wanted to say thank you, Brenda and staff that was part of this SAT day for the seniors. It really does make a huge difference in the lives of these students. There are many majors out there that students are applying for that are not SAT optional and are limiting these students' opportunities in applying to these schools. And so all that time and effort really will make a big difference in the lives of these seniors who are able to apply into these majors because they are required to have the SATs. And last spring, because of the pandemic and where we were in the world, they were not allowed to have that opportunity. And so I thank you from the bottom of my heart. It makes a huge difference. And I think that there are many other families out there that feel the same. I do have to say that summer reading is very near and dear to my heart. So I just have to believe that this is just a blip in our system and that next year we'll be up and running again and that, you know, it just, coming back the way that we came back and the way we ended last year, it just was one of those things that wasn't top on the list. You know, we were focusing more social emotionally as we should have been. But I do think that we should be reflective this time next year as to where our numbers are because maybe we do need to take in budget some time or funds into that area because I do believe that it really impacts the students across the curriculum. You know, the more they're reading, the more their vocabulary is expanding and it's just the whole child is affected by that. So I think that, you know, it totally is a blip because of where we were, but I just wanted to make sure that it's not forgotten next year, that we are reflective and that if we do need to streamline it in some way or give it some more attention, that we do so. But thank you so much for your report.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos. I'd just like to add as well that I appreciate of, I know everyone is in the community to the administration and Karen Baker O'Brien and our new principal, Mr. Bernard, who really made it a priority. That's 85 kids that got left kind of out in the dark last spring and certainly having that opportunity in the fall. I know I got a ton of phone calls about it. So I'm glad we were able to get that and provide that for those students. So big kudos to those people that made that happen. So, and moving on to a quick budget timeline update, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Dave Libby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just hard to, kind of hard to think about next year when there's so much uncertainty going on around the present, but we do have a hard deadline with our town bylaw to produce a budget for the FY '22 year by January 8. So we'll be starting that process here in the next few weeks and months, working with our department heads and principals throughout November and into December. Problem solving with them on personnel, facility, technology needs of their schools. Working with anything curriculum, programmatic or personnel-wise will be related, reviewed and considered by the superintendent and assistant superintendent. Technology needs always are assessed by Mr. Stamp and our technology group. Into December, we typically get a target from the town manager on where our budget looks like it's headed for the subsequent fiscal year. So we can start making decisions as to what gets in our funded within our LEA budget or via one-time funds. Sometimes an item is specifically geared towards a one-time fund, both grants or revolving account, or items that might get tabled for future consideration. We do that through December. As I said earlier, January 8, we have a hard deadline to produce a budget for the town and the finance committee. We have to submit three figures technically, a salary budget, an operating budget and a capital outlay budget. And then we support that with detailed account level data. Through January, February and March, we'll hold a series of workshops and meetings, public hearings to focus on the FY '22 budget. Changes and edits can occur here as new information becomes available and likely will given the state of affairs that we're in right now. And then we, the final budget gets approved at town meeting in May of '21. But just wanted to keep the committee aware that that process will be kicking off shortly. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. I just want to say a thank you and extend to my colleagues. I know you've always extended this courtesy to me. I know you do to them as well. If anyone has any specific questions, you're always more than ready to be available and to meet with us. So I just want to tell you how much I appreciate that and I'm sure everyone on the committee does. Mr. Cutlass, I'll start with him if he has any questions or comments.
No, Mr. Chair, thank you. Just like to thank Mr. Libby for a good job.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mr. Wilson?
Nothing. Thank you, Mr. Libby.
Great. Mrs. Demos?
I have no questions tonight. I do appreciate him meeting with us individually for questions that do arise, though.
Great. And Mrs. Stadman?
Nope, nothing at this time. Looking forward to a, this next budget season.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Libby. And we're gonna move on to school committee matters of interest. I'm gonna start with Mr. Cutlass.
I'm all set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stadman?
I've got nothing at this time.
Great. Mrs. Demos?
I'm all set this evening. Thank you.
And Mr. Wilson?
I'm all set tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And the only thing I have is a continued thank you to the parents. And as Ms. Regan mentioned, please be on the lookout for those surveys. We know we still have more work to do here. We understand, you know, we want to get as much in-person time and learning for students. We also want to make sure they're safe. We're currently in negotiations, negotiating a remote plan and we'll be negotiating and all-in plan as well. So that information is absolutely crucial to us that we get that and that we have that communication between the parents. So please be on the lookout for that. That's very helpful for us in our decision-making. And if you want to reach out and call or send an email, that's great too. So moving on to school committee, future meetings, our next scheduled meeting is scheduled for November 18, 2020. And the meeting after that will be December 9, 2020. Does anyone have any future agenda items? Mr. Cutlass?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Wilson?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stadman?
No, nothing at this time, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Demos?
Nothing at this time.
Great. Thank you. And to the public that's listening out there, you're always welcome to send suggestions in for things you want to see on the agenda. You can send that to anyone on the school committee or the superintendent as well. And with that being said, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Cutlass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well. Thank you for attending this evening and have a good evening.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.